Nancy has a reputation for teaching from the heart. She is considered to be a master teacher who is known of her patience and kindness and mindfulness. She serves as a mentor, cooperating teacher, as well as a former, formally-trained science teacher in the STEM areas. She has also had a highly distinguished career as a special education teacher. Nancy has won the respect of her colleagues, parents, and students due to the outstanding results she achieves year after year. We congratulate her on this wonderful accomplishment. I wish that I had something to read about each and every one of the people standing in this room. This is not, I mean, I'm not taking away from this. This is very special. She is a very special lady, but no more special than anybody. When I read the years of service for the people that are here, it's amazing. If you grab a copy of one of the attendance that are out in front, those of you that are not teachers, you can look and see the number of years that some of these people have dedicated to working in this district for the children. It's not for building, selling, renting classes for the children, all about the children. It really truly is a work of art and teaching. It seems every year a little bit more jugs that I've changed to be a teaching. Didn't think I could do this, sorry. And I got my credit, because it takes so much more than anybody ever gives credit. It's not a part-time job. It's not something you just do to get the summers off. It's not any of those things that people think of as teachers. It's the selfless thing I've ever seen. And here, to talk about the number of years of people here, somebody finally added that, remember it was Hank Luthwell? Richard, excuse me, Mr. Giannelli. Nine hundred and sixty-six years, relatively, is what you all worked. So when I call your names, I'm going to ask if you'll just come up and we have a small sort of appreciation for you and shake our hands, please, and let them know how much we've helped you go out here today and still do. We'll start with himself, himself. Someone I've known on different levels, Kenneth Allsborough. Kenny's worked with Roethlisberger for forty-three years. He does tech at Danbury High School. And if you're ever looking for a singer or an aunt, call. Was that good? Last man standing is the guy that paid out the person. Consult the website, I'll have to.
You didn't know that, did you? No. Nice surprise.
I have Ruth Ayers. And she obviously knows us. I know, I know who you are. She's a first grade teacher at Morris Street for this school. Did anybody know? Thank you so much. Thank you. That was your son. Okay, it's a twenty-nine-year average, guys. It averages out twenty-nine years. Okay, Richard, stop with the man. Okay. Teresa Cavalero. Okay, I'm sorry. Teresa has worked thirty-one years, ESL para at Rogers Park. Thank you very, very much. Someone else over there, I'm sure, I'm trying to. All right, and Margarita. Margarita. Next, we have Carmenina Fernandez. I just met. Carmenina, thirty-nine years. Oh, we have another one. Penny Garde at Morris Street. God bless you. Special, special congratulations. Okay. This is not one of them. Not that I want to do anyone, but this one's extremely hard for me. This is a woman that I regret, not disrespect, but actually have a great body. I'm going to share the point. Julie's been with us forty-five years.
Thank you.
I cheer. Okay, so we all have a little ceremony. There's a couple people that will bring tears to my eyes, and that's the one that just did it, so. Okay, John McWitz. Did I say it right?
Yes.
I'm having a special ed at Rogers Park. I remember him, Roger. I would bless him to be my son's assistant. But they'll do that. Thank you so much. Congratulations. He's Elena Walser. Is she here? Elena Maslow? No, okay. Marie Narikowski? That's her last name. Rizben, twelve. This is Secretary Reed's place. That's very, okay. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Oh, I just did that. Nice touch. Raymond Rogers. Raymond, is he here? Thirty-two years. He's been a custodian at Park Avenue. God bless you, sir. Thank you so much. Kathleen's been with us for forty-one years. Can you help it Danbury High?
And Rogers Park.
And Rogers Park.
Oh, come, you were twelve.
Okay, for any of those that miss you, she remembers and remembers when she was there. Thank God, I'm very pleased. Okay. Thank you, Kathleen. Okay, next is Linda Treeby. Linda's been with us twenty-nine years, and she's a parent. Thanks for coming, Ray. Thank you so much. Adele's twenty-one years, special ed parent at Westside.
Rogers Park.
Rogers Park. Go Westside. Good luck. Thank you. Rogers Park.
Yep. I was right.
Before we sit down and think we're done, is there anyone that we didn't mention here that's retiring? Anybody at all that we haven't mentioned? It didn't have to be on the list, someone didn't write you down. I forgot to mention you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. I'm sorry. Celebrations seem to need, I can say thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. And sit down until I finish speaking. Sir. Here you go.
There's still some goodies in the hallway. You're welcome to go in and enjoy.
Yeah, please.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Dr. Glass. Dr. Glass. Did you take a picture of this group?
Group photo.
We need a group photo, don't hurt. Don't let anybody escape. I mean, keep them. Okay. Okay. I'm sure they're nice.
Cheese, guys. One more. We'll have you back to something next week.
Can I just say something one second? I just want to say that education is like magic. And when we get the kids, they come in, there's nothing there. But what we do is we build a foundation. Because with the foundation, we can build anything we want. But if we don't do the foundation, it goes back to where it was. But here's where it happens. You get the foundation back, and then you put all the magic you can, and your heart and your head to the kids, and you get the full picture and pay your love to them. That education is like magic. Because of what we do to the kids, give me twenty-five years here in Connecticut, thirteen on Long Island, after-school program, ran a summer program, but they asked me how we magic it. And I said, magic is just like education. Because if you have that in your class, and you catch a kid's heart, whatever it may be, whatever he is or she is, you take it and you do what you can, and then they'll say, "Oh, Mr. Mac, how did you do that?" I say, "Well, carefully." Because if you take this and you pick the favorite color of them all, and my favorite color's green. You know why it's colored green? Because of two master's degrees in education. Because with green, we can go anywhere we want. Let's keep the kids in Danbury safe. Let's keep them smart, and let's get them all to go to college.
Awards. Can you stand up? Are you all here? Do you want to trip? Did you receive them? About two weeks ago, the Connecticut Association of Supervisors recognized as students across Connecticut in a hundred and sixty-nine towns in the East District. They wants to recognize those students in those districts that not only advance academically, but the mission of the school relative to community service, helping others, and good citizenship. Competition is very tough. You're selected by your school faculty and principal, and these four are recommended. And I'll read names. You tell me which school you're from, because I don't know. And I'll read all of them. Which school are you from in last name?
Danbury High School, Rose.
Okay. Well, congratulations. And from the Alternative Center, Tywana Watson and Jose Arreola, are they here? I don't think so. Okay. And Broadview, we had Penner Bruleon and Nazir Pryor. Rogers Park, Sylvia Chaketzee and Joel Martinez. Westside Junior School, Cassidy Holmes and Theodore Hogg. Would you just come out of here so we can shake your hand? Congratulations. Are the parents here? Please stand. And thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you remember when you'd say, "Useless, your family, useless," in a sorority? Okay, you have your pictures taken, all right. Is that it? Aren't you with it?
No.
They'll leave together here, so I haven't leave. All right, congratulations. Mr. Pocaccia has something too for the board.
I was wondering whether Mr. Pocaccia was here.
Good evening, neighbors. On behalf of the students at Danbury High School, our graduating class, our seniors, I'd like to invite you to our graduation next week on Wednesday. We thank you very, very much for your past support. It means a great deal to the students, and we look forward to your attendance this year as a little token of our appreciation and thanks, and certainly for the dignity you are entitled to. We would like to present each of you with this to be worn at graduation evening. It says, "Danbury Board of Education." Of course, it's in colors of blue and orange.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, at this point?
Is Salver?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
And also while I'm here, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you one of our stellar students, a junior at Danbury High School. She was recently returned from being a senate page, a distinction that very, very few people in this country ever enjoy. She's here this evening as a representative, and this is Alexis Pendegras. You'll be hearing a great deal about her.
It's a pleasure speaking with her and I read her letters and her notes. And she's going to be a current member of our board as a representative on state matters. Wow. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. We get very excited when we get these, and we have to clap that. Our next award is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Student Awards. We have two young people. I know one that's above you, I believe, in the audience, right? And I'd love to tell you who they are. I think the award is about Megan Zederluss, honey. I'm sorry? Steph Miat. All right. She's a solemn student who works hard to get mostly A's. In her free time, she enjoys creative writing and devotes a lot of time to the arts. She's played soccer since fourth grade and also runs track. She currently plays for the Danbury Youth Community Service as well as volunteering at Rogers Park Media Center during her lunch period. Megan also enjoys singing in her church choir. And did you hear the part where she works hard to get most of the A's? Okay? So she is a student athlete. You're well-rounded. Thank you. Please come up and receive her. Thank you. What happened here?
Congratulations.
What happened to your leg? What happened to your leg? Yep, it was a sucker injury. Congratulations, sweetheart. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. This is middle school, guys. It's pretty amazing. And thank you to her parents, also. The parents are here. Yes, I'm sorry. Stand the parents for the clapping. Come on. Get the. The young people never really win it by themselves, guys. They don't win it if they don't have people like you. There you go. Okay, I'd like to read to you about Jacob Lamb. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Jacob, congratulations for being chosen to receive Cape Student Leadership Award. Wait, 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 wait. Hold on, I've lost the thing about you, Jacob. Okay. His "I didn't win awards" when I was in eighth grade. Okay. He's an eighth-grade student at Westside Middle School Academy. He participates in the STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Program. Jacob participates in the National Junior Honor Society Student Council, plays in the jazz and concert bands, and will represent WSMSA as one of the ten finalists at the Connecticut State Science and Engineering Fair. Outside the school, he is a volunteer at the Danbury Library and participates in martial arts and religious education. Please come. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations. Good work. Congratulations. Okay. On Tuesday, May eighteenth, nineteenth, I'm sorry, Westside Middle School Academy, eighth grade students, Christopher Wang was recognized by the Connecticut Academy of Science and Engineering for his outstanding research. UV-C, lightning as a supplemental method of preservation in refrigerators. God bless you. To reduce energy consumption. Oh, dear. Okay. Just say I'm impressed mildly. Christopher's project won the Connecticut State and Engineering Fair's Middle School, Urban School Challenge at the academy. Chris was recognized with a citation from the governor and a citation from Congresswoman Elizabeth Estey. The school also received a plaque and a $500 award. Excellent. Where, is he here? Yes. Oh, thank God. Come on. Okay. Oh, all right. What do you want?
Could you tell the audience a little bit of what you did? This is kind of nerve-wracking. Except for any slip.
Okay, you know what? Just, you don't have to. If you just, you know, just talk. Talk to me. Tell me about it. Because I don't understand it, so please tell me. Okay? Go ahead, honey.
So, um, so when I found out about this project, I was a little nervous because I've never done a science fair before. So when it came time to choosing a topic, I thought about how we use up so much energy in this world, so I wanted to see if we can reduce the amount of energy we use. So I did a little research, and I found this thing called a UV-C light, which kills surface bacteria. And I ordered it, and I thought it was, it would be cool if I could put that in my refrigerator and turn all, um, and we could put it in the refrigerator, and it would shine on the food, and you wouldn't need to have your refrigerator running all day, which would save a lot of energy. So.
Wow. Wow. Congratulations. Thank you. He's looking like he doesn't everybody. Yes. Everybody come for your picture to be taken. Stay right there, honey, and get your picture taken with Dr. Glass. Oh, Dr. Blanca, come and talk to us about your student. And how not proud you are of him.
So it's very exciting for Christopher to receive this award from Connecticut. And, you know, he told you about the wonderful work and many of our students' work at our school, so we're really excited to show you. Chris didn't tell you, in addition to his award, the European School Challenge, he headed to the International Competition, the Genius Olympiad, next week, right?
Yes.
So he's going to be representing Connecticut, and he's the only middle school student in Connecticut to be invited to the Genius Olympiad.
Wow, is all I can say.
Those copyrights stay with the school district.
That's so. Always thinking. Okay. Okay. Okay, and wait, there's parents that I didn't recognize. I was just told I didn't. Where's, where's his parents? Where are the young men's parents?
Where's Christopher's parents?
Where's Christopher's? Okay, question. Do you think like that, too?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I just wonder, I just was wondering. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Isn't it the best when you just talk about what the kids did? Wouldn't it be nice if we just had meetings like this all the time, where we just celebrated the children? It makes it, it makes it all worthwhile. You have no idea. We, for those of you that are young enough that don't realize, we don't, we're elected to these positions. We don't get paid for them. We just donate our time, and we, and you all become faceless and nameless, and we talk about you in groups. It's nice when you come and celebrate the one. Okay. Michael's our timekeeper and I'm going to start. I didn't see her, she's here. And I'm happy, she's a friend of mine. Kathy Keefe? She's another person that has trouble talking. Yes, yes, the other.
You may have to turn a few of the microphones off because we're getting...
I'm sorry. Maybe we can get an updated system someday. My prince will come. Hi Kathy.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Keefe, go.
So I'm Kathy Keefe and someday I'm going to come and we're all going to be on the same page and it's going to be so great, but right now, I just want to talk about the sibling policy that you're thinking of canceling at the magnet school. I did have a chance to go to the advisory meeting and it was explained to the partnering districts that, you know, you are discussing this, but it's not going to affect them. And I thought their response was spot-on because they thanked you for not, you know, taking away from them, but they said, "Our families will appreciate that." And I thought, ding, I wish there was a bell in there, ding, exactly. And I feel with you doing this, you're going to put five districts having this policy against the Danbury parents. It is a lottery, I understand that, and when you apply, you're choosing to go to that school, but it's always been with the thought that maybe, you know, my younger children will get in. And that's so important and I just feel, I don't know how this came about, has there been enough discussion amongst you? Have you really considered Dr. Natowski? She is a leader in Danbury Public Schools. She has made the school so successful, her staff is wonderful, there is a family environment. And I just feel, why aren't you going to the person that has made this a success? Why isn't she really being considered, you know, her opinion? She's with those children, she knows the families in the school. And I just feel, I wish someone maybe would be a voice for us on the board during this discussion. And I feel that you should say, "Look, this is successful, it's working. Why are we trying to fix it? It's not broken." So I just hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keefe. Okay. Well, this man, gentleman, needs no introduction. Mr. Maloney, Jim Maloney?
Thank you, Ms. Alberts and members of the board. Good evening, Jim Maloney, 15 Worcester Heights, Danbury, Connecticut. I am here to speak in support of the superintendent's recommended funding for Head Start and against any further cuts. Head Start has been cut, Board of Ed funding, by, from $800,000 down to this year's recommendation of $385,000 over the past few years. I don't complain about that because that was the agreement, that the staff would be transferred to Connecticut Institute for Communities and we would absorb those cuts. And we have done that. And we've done it primarily because our fringe benefit rate is less than half of what the Board of Ed pays and we are able to use more part-time people and structure our staff a little more flexibly than had been historically the case at the Board of Ed. But at $385,000, we are at 50-plus percent of what was agreed several years ago, that the board would look to cut the total grant by about half. So we're there. Any further cut would mean a serious impact on program. It's not possible to always have more efficiencies. At some point, you run out of efficiencies. Every $100,000 additional cut means roughly three full-time positions and 20 fewer kids receiving Head Start. And I would say to you, there's no need to cut Head Start any further. The state just provided a $1.1 million increase in the grant to the Board of Education here in Danbury because Danbury's a priority school district. What does that mean? It has lots of low-income kids, it has lots of minority kids, it has lots of kids in need of early childhood education. Those are the kids in Head Start. That's what Head Start provides. And we appreciate the grant, we appreciate the support of the Board of Ed over the years, right? But if you cut Head Start, you're going to pay more, it's a financially irresponsible decision. You're going to pay more in terms of remedial education, social education, and the like, right? So I conclude by saying that it's the, cutting Head Start's the wrong thing to do, it's educationally wrong, I believe it's morally wrong, you're hurting exactly the kids in Danbury who need the extra help the most. So I ask you to do the right thing, support the superintendent's recommendation, do the educationally correct thing, don't cut Head Start. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Deb Maloney?
Thank you for having me today. I was in touch with a couple of you about a situation and I'm just going to quote off the website what I got off of the Connecticut Department of Education. It says it is the local Board of Education's decision to admit your child before he or she is age-eligible for kindergarten. I submitted an application for the magnet school. My daughter was admitted in February this year and so I wanted her to go and then I was told last week that she didn't meet the cutoff. So I'm asking if you can consider that. I sent you the information via email and I would really appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Yeah. Me too. Joan LaRosa? I'm sorry, John. I'm very, very sorry. I need new glasses, sorry.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me at the meeting. I just wanted to talk a little bit about AIS. My son is a first grader there. Recently got the notice at home about the sibling policy possibly being eliminated. And when my son entered that school, one of the big things that the secretary, she walked us around the building, shared with us is, "This is a school where we want families to be talking about education." That was a big push. We want to see and we want to develop a community where siblings are sitting at a kitchen table and a kindergartner and a second grader, both at our school can talk about China because that's what they're learning about in school. And I currently, again, have a first grader in the school. My younger son will be, will be entering the program. I hear it's a, will be grandfathered into this program. But I want to speak for those parents that have not yet enrolled their students in that, in that program, in that school. And the opportunities that if you eliminate the sibling policy, the opportunities those families will lose. My younger son, every day, talks about wanting to join that school, wants to learn about the different countries, wants to learn Spanish, all of these great things that that school offers. And I could not imagine you dividing that up and having one of my kids at AIS and another kid at King Street. I have no problem with the Danbury Public Schools, I'm highly supportive of it. I think all of the elementary schools are fabulous, but I think having students in two different schools, my children are going to lose that connection. I came directly from AIS to this meeting because we were at a family ice cream social. That's a great opportunity for us all to be together. I'm not sure if we'd be able to do that if I had a child at King Street and a child at AIS. You'd be dividing my family so that we could attend all of these events. Everyone's got soccer, everyone's got baseball, everyone's got Cub Scouts. Now we'd be worrying about which school function do we go to? Because we wouldn't be able to do everything. So I think there's pressure on education here, but then there's a whole different pressure on family dynamics. And I think that you, considering eliminating that program, really puts a hardship on families, in my family especially, at the dinner table. So I'd like you to really reconsider that policy. I think it's the right policy and I'd like you to think about your families in that position and how that might affect them. Thank you very much.
Tricia Robinson?
Good evening and many of you met me a couple of weeks ago and I brought my six-year-old and three-year-old to the meeting because my husband was working late, so I, one, want to thank you for helping me out there, entertain a three-year-old, and two, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm from Indianapolis, Indiana, and the school system is completely different than Connecticut. I applied to a magnet school when I was in high school into performing arts and danced two hours a day for the first three years of my high school and took humanities based upon my educational performance. So the thought of just entering a lottery and your kid gets pulled out of a bucket was completely foreign to me. And I got lucky, I won the lottery. I do want to say that this seems to be moving at lightning speed. We approved the recent policy two years ago and it just came to my attention two weeks ago that they wanted to change the policy. For those of you who haven't had a chance to read the email that I sent last night, there's about, about 40 available slots for kindergarten for Danbury residents and about 300 people applied last year. That means, without sibling preference, you'd have a 13% chance of getting into the school, which is pretty low. What that tells me is Danbury needs more of these kinds of schools. We have a huge need and not a great supply. With the sibling preference, it goes down to 24 available slots, which means with sibling preference, those who don't have a sibling would have an 8% chance of getting in. That's only five basis points. I do not think that's enough of a difference to make a drastic change in the current families. Additionally, most of the parents don't understand at this school that this policy has been implemented or was going to be in place. And I do believe that the entire school should be notified by the Board of Education and that they should have a true voice as to what is going to happen here. I honestly believe that we have built an award-winning school because we have amazing family support, because we can talk about the same things at the dinner table, we can go to the ice cream socials, we can talk about the gardening that we do, we can do all the things we can do as a family because we allow our kids to go to the same school. I sat down to a father of three children last night at the ice cream social and he was frightened that his third child may not get into the school because he's a Danbury resident. Frightened. I understand that there's a lot of pressure on the board, that there are parents who want to get in, and I understand that. But why don't we focus our energy and our time on building, taking another great school that we have and creating the same kind of environment that everybody wants to get in? Hartford has built over 30 schools, New Haven has over 25 schools, Danbury's a pretty fantastic town, I'm pretty sure we can do just as good as New Haven and Hartford. Thank you for your consideration.
I have no real formal statement, but as a former Danbury classroom teacher, a former officer of NEA Danbury, a longtime advocate for public education, a teacher advocate, and a member of the Danbury NAACP, I have a simple comment and request. I ask that you pass a budget that will support the neediest Danbury students, the least, the last, and often left out, needs school programs that will enable them to be successful students now and contributing citizens in the future. If cuts to proposed budget must be made, make them taking due consideration of all the students, especially with the view toward closing the much balahood achievement gap. I trust that you know which programs are most important in the education of ethnic minority and economically disadvantaged students. The motto there is "All About Kids." I would modify that to say, "It's all about all of the kids." Thank you for your time.
I'm going to ask, row by row, is there anyone in the second or third row that would like to speak that hasn't signed up? And the fourth or fifth row, is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak?
Thank you. All righty. No laughing. There'll be no laughing at the chair, please, thank you very much. All righty, is there an employee representative here to speak? No? It probably would be nice if we went, if I went in order. Kathy, would you like to do the consent calendar?
That the Board of Education approves the items on the consent calendar, it's in its 15-116 through 15-120 as recommended.
Segmented by Mrs. Cooper. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Your passes? Okay.
Student rep.
I'm sorry?
Student reps.
I'm sorry?
Student reps.
Student, that's what I was going to...
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Right here, right here. Just let me say, hi, the student reps are here.
I'm going over there.
Wow, okay. Take your time, don't rush, it's okay. It's the friendly Board of Ed meeting.
Hi, I'm Grace Delotti, the BOG Vice President. So, the final spring concert took place on June 1st. Last Thursday, June 4th, was our last advisory. Monday night, 99 seniors received awards and scholarships from various places around town. And last night was the spring sports award banquet and our Sikorsky STEM Challenge won first place. Tomorrow, June 11th, is the senior class trip to Six Flags. And I'd also like to introduce our senior class president and treasurer to talk a little bit about the senior class.
Hello, everyone. My name is Erin Alessandro. I'm the senior class treasurer. I'd just like to highlight on some things that we have done this year. One of our main goals was to unify the senior class as much as possible and we did so by creating senior T-shirts that we gave out to all the students that paid their dues. We had an amazing senior prom. We're going on our senior class trip. We've had our senior fest in the fall and we will have another one similar like that right before graduation called our senior barbecue. And it's just been a great year for all the students with many achievements and we'd like to thank you for your constant support. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ryan Ansel and I am the senior class president at Danbury High School. And as Mr. Picaccio did before, we would also like to invite you as class officers to our graduation on June 17th. And we have some 2015...
fantastic town, and I'm pretty sure we can do just as good as New Haven and Hartford. Thank you for your consideration.
I have no real formal statement, but as a former Danbury classroom teacher, a former officer of NEA Danbury, a longtime advocate for public education, a teacher advocate, and a member of the Danbury NAACP, I have a simple comment and request. I ask that you pass a budget that will support the neediest Danbury students, the least, the last, and often left out, needs school programs that will enable them to be successful students now and contributing citizens in the future. If cuts to proposed budget must be made, make them taking due consideration of all the students, especially with the view toward closing the much balahood achievement gap. I trust that you know which programs are most important in the education of ethnic minority and economically disadvantaged students. The motto there is "all about kids." I would modify that to say "it's all about all of the kids." Thank you for your time.
I'm going to ask row by row, is there anyone in the second or third row that would like to speak that hasn't signed up? And the fourth or fifth row, is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak?
Thank you. All righty. No laughing. There'll be no laughing at the chair, please, thank you very much. All righty, is there an employee representative here to speak? No? It probably would be nice if we went, if I went in order. Kathy, would you like to do the consent calendar?
That the Board of Education approves the items on the consent calendar, it's in its 15-116 through 15-120 as recommended.
Segmented by Mrs. Cooper. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Your passes? Okay.
Student rep.
I'm sorry?
Student reps.
I'm sorry?
Student reps.
Student, that's what I was going to...
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, right here, right here. Just let me say, hi, the student reps are here.
I'm going over there.
Wow, okay. Take your time, don't rush, it's okay. It's the friendly Board of Ed meeting.
Hi, I'm Grace Gilati, the BOG Vice President. So, the final spring concert took place on June 1st. Last Thursday, June 4th, was our last advisory. Monday night, 99 seniors received awards and scholarships from various places around town. And last night was the spring sports award banquet, and our Sikorsky STEM Challenge won first place. Tomorrow, June 11th, is the senior class trip to Six Flags, and I'd also like to introduce our senior class president and treasurer to talk a little bit about the senior class.
Hello, everyone, my name is Erin Alessandro, I'm the senior class treasurer. I'd just like to highlight on some things that we have done this year. One of our main goals was to unify the senior class as much as possible, and we did so by creating senior T-shirts that we gave out to all the students that paid their dues. We had an amazing senior prom. We're going on our senior class trip, we've had our senior fest in the fall, and we will have another one similar like that, right before graduation, called our senior barbecue. And it's just been a great year for all the students with many achievements, and we'd like to thank you for your constant support, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Ryan Ansel, and I am the senior class president at Danbury High School. And as Mr. Picaccio did before, we would also like to invite you as class officers to our graduation on June 17th. And we have some 2015 tassels and formal invitations for you all, so thank you.
Thank you very much. There anyone here for Mace?
No. All right, and I'd also like to introduce our new Board of Governors members.
Thank you.
So, hi, I'm Sophia Pompilio, and I'm the BOG president. Hi, I am the new DHS BOG Vice President. Oh, my name is Han Dwan, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Renee Cunningham, and I'm the BOD treasurer.
Hi, I'm Caroline Missouri, and next year I'll be the Board of Governors secretary.
Thank you very much, and welcome. All righty. Now, we have somebody, do we have anybody here for Mace to speak? Okay, seeing nobody, I have someone I'd like to introduce, but I'm not going to introduce her because I only just recently met her this evening in person. I'm going to ask Dr. Glass, would you please, I know Mr. Picaccio sort of introduced her, could you please introduce her now that it's her turn to speak? Alexandra.
Alexandra is an amazing young woman, Alexandra Pendigras. She was a Senate page this past winter down in Washington. She was one of 25 students identified to possibly be on the State Board of Education that's been narrowed down to five, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, and she'll find out this summer, regardless of what happens with that, she will be part of the advisory committee to the State Board of Education, and now is going to be joining the Danbury Board of Education as another voice, thank you, to help make sure that we have good connectivity with our student population and with our parent population. I first met her, I think it was last summer, really got to know her when she was one of the CPEP students, Connecticut Pre-Engineering Project Program, rather, up at the high school, and they were designing apps for smartphones and computers, and these kids are going to be very wealthy someday. It was absolutely amazing what they had come up with in the world of medicine and music and so on and so forth. So, she's remarkable. The other thing I want to share with you is that Mr. Picaccio said that she's in his office pretty much every day with another idea. So she's got a remarkable amount of energy, and we're delighted to have her as part of the team. Thank you.
Welcome. Go, girl, you're on.
Thank you, and if you don't mind if I said a word or two, I really do appreciate this wonderful opportunity to serve on the Danbury Board of Education. Regardless of what happens, my term as a member of the Connecticut State Student Advisory Council begins this September, so no matter what, I'm looking forward to hearing from the state on a number of issues. I will be responsible for bringing information to the Student Advisory Council about student opinion, not just here in Danbury, but across the state of Connecticut, and I hope that I can bring back more information about what's going on over there, and hopefully that'll help out the Danbury Board of Ed. So thank you so much, Dr. Glass, that was very, very kind. Dr. Pasquarella, thank you too, and thank you so much, Ms. Alberts, I appreciate that, and I look forward to working with all of you this year.
Welcome. We welcome you, Lexine. For the people that look confused, it's an honor to receive, much as our student representatives, so thank you very much. All righty. Okay, are you waving? Oh, you can go, guys, that was the signal, you may leave.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm sorry, before you leave, I should ask, I understand Monday night there was an awards ceremony and fellowship. How much was given out and to approximately how many students? Any idea?
There were 99 students that attended and cost a great bunch, $500, $1,000, $3,000.
$8,000.
From what I understand, it was in excess of $100,000 in total given out? Congratulations, well deserved.
That's excellent. All right, we're going to digress from the agenda as it is and go to discussion, so we can leave behind some of the people that are sitting glued to the chairs. So, Sal, you want to...
Yeah, I'll start with the teacher evaluation. Bob, you were at the meeting when I'm here.
Microphone, Bob.
The Teacher Evaluation Committee, I guess they, first of all, decided they will meet quarterly, I think, next year. It was a good turnout, it was a good turnout, I would say, about 18 or so, and it was a very open meeting at the teacher evaluation meeting. There seemed to have been some concerns on how the program, teacher evaluation, was working. Of course, remember that the secondary schools would be in the second year of it, and all the other elementary schools would be on the first year of it, okay? And Dr. Glass, I guess, called the first stage mechanical, if I remember. It's sort of getting used to the procedure and the timelines, and the fact that hopefully there's consistency among all the administrators on how they evaluate, and some concerns were brought up. And I guess the feeling was that a number of improvements could be made, but maybe time was maybe the most important thing in, you know, making these improvements. But the improvements were brought out before the entire group. It seems there was a rush on evaluations to the end of the semester, which, rather than being spaced out on an even basis, understandably, this is because the administrators, I think, feel that, to be honest, there overwhelms many of them, that maybe there are not enough administrators to do the job. I got the feeling that the criticism was, now, this is personally by being there, I got the feeling that more criticism was at the high schools because you had different people, obviously, doing the evaluation, where at the elementary schools, the principal would generally be doing most of the evaluations. But, again, you have the people who travel, and that was another question, people who travel might come under the domain of a few administrators. So, my feeling is that it was an open meeting, the concerns were made, I believe Dr. Glass said they would be addressed, okay, and that that's where we are now. How does that sound?
I think Mr. Tabersack did a very good job of capturing the meeting. The largest frustration from my perspective, and I think it echoes what Bob said, is that this is a very challenging enterprise. Dr. Pasquarella and I met with a number of central office administrators today and talked to them about this, and the ability to meet the demands of the state requirement, and we are doing the minimum that we're required by law to do. So we're trying to be as creative and as inventive as possible, and the state is entertaining an idea of opening a pilot, and maybe Danbury could be a pilot district. The other piece is that, I just want to punctuate Mr. Tabersack's point, it was very democratic, it was democracy in action, because people really felt very comfortable speaking their mind, what they felt went very well, and much of it has gone very well, and where they thought the bumps in the roads were. And so we captured every thought that they had, we sent it out back to the committee, and that's going to serve as the platform for next year's work of the committee. In the interim period, we're going to be looking and possibly talking to the state about other options that we might consider, and then flesh those out a little bit and bring them back to the full board for you to consider, see if it makes sense, and if it does, then we would send it up to the state, asking them if this is something that they would entertain. So overall, it was, I think it was a very good end to the school year. On a personal level, I feel that our folks have really stepped up to the bar to do a wonderful job with a daunting challenge, and nothing else has been taken off their plates. So they're doing really yeoman's work on this, it's just, it's to be expected that they were going to have this kind of challenging environment, given the increased demand against them, but I'm proud of them all.
Thank you, thank you. Sal?
I don't think anybody has any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? He's down running. Does anybody have any questions of Bob or...
I'll just leave you with this note. When we went through and did a research on the method that we want to use for improved instruction, we chose the Marzano model, research, purely research model. I've got this. And the other that I, that we researched... Hello? Hello?
Do it this way.
The one that we chose, thank you, the one that we chose was Marzano, but one that we competed with it was the Kim Marshall model. Kim Marshall is a, I'm faculty now at Harvard, he was a Boston principal for about 35 years, he's now a national consultant. But the reason why I bring it up, I met, we met him at a conference, and we brought him here last week. He lives in Boston, he's working with the school districts in New York. And if you could remember, the whole purpose of teacher evaluation was not to look at explicitly where people are not doing what they ought to be doing in the classroom, but to find ways to improve the classroom. And his research over time, his model is looking at an event over time, and he references to a book called "The Talent Code," if you take some time to look at it. And he researched back throughout the world where there's all of these groups that are needing success. For example, in South America, where are the championship soccer teams coming from? He was looking at the Middle East in terms of where successful teams are coming from there, also in soccer. He looked at the Czech team, he looked at the Russian teams, and he would draw back, and his point was, it was going to a small towns without a lot of resources, but he looked at the work that they did. It wasn't the amount of work that was being done, or the time, it was the type of work that's being done and the kind of coaching that was being done. For explicit information to improve either soccer, hockey, whatever sport metaphor you want to look at. Where in teacher evaluation, we go in for 50 minutes, 60 minutes, 70 minutes, we have a conference and a post-conference. His idea is to go over time and do short mini-visits to give feedback face-to-face, and our system's a little too mechanical, that's what I think Bob was talking about, too much operational. Maybe in the beginning stages, we're uncomfortable with it, but I think we need to look at something that's much more interactive, something that's going to have more dialogue over teaching and learning, and not worry about timelines. And the state's forcing us to do some things, but the innovation that Bill's talking about is that we could put a proposal together that maybe makes more sense for our teachers and our administrators, and overall have more effective system. So that's the area that we want to move into, and Kim came with this last week, was it? He's coming back in August and some time next month here, just to talk through different options with us, so we're pretty excited about it. So I'm glad that happened. With that, be on the agenda, AIS Advisory Board meeting. You may know, because the board considered moving that procedure for the sibling policy, or really a regulation in our lottery, to the policy committee. It is not a policy, it is a regulation that was handed to the board when the program was first developed, from the surrounding towns. There's an advisory board that by statute works with, in conjunction with this board, they're advisory to this board. We had a meeting last week, I believe, and we talked about the sibling preference. I think because it wasn't impacting them, I didn't get the sense that they were too uptight about it. You know, I know anybody else at the meeting was there can comment about it, did you, what did you, did you pick anything up from any of this?
I got the, oh, Dave, you want to?
Sure. Yeah, I have to agree with Dr. Sal, I got the same impression. Most of the, as explained already today, most of the outer districts didn't seem to have a problem with the conversation that we were having. The issues came up with people related to the Danbury district.
Right. And we had a parent there and voiced their concern about changing that procedure in lottery, and would wish that the board take really serious consideration as mentioned by the speakers this evening. So, the way this would work, this operating plan that we have is submitted to the state for approval. It's our funding source, we have to notify them, we receive, I think Joe, what? $2 million in funding from the Magnet School, right? And it goes to them, and they look at it and then approve it. We are not a chef's school, which means we cannot require individuals to come to this school. Chef's school are all the surrounding schools dealing with desegregation for the greater Hartford area. New Haven and the other schools are chef's schools, they're called. If they don't meet a quota, they can still bill back tuitions to the sending schools. And I'll explain, something's going on at the state legislature about that. So we're not, we're a choice Magnet School that was put together by the good citizens of Western Connecticut for purpose of integration, and that's why the surrounding schools all participated in the program. So that's a commendable effort, nobody was forced into it. But they have to, we send Hartford the plan, they approve the plan, when they approve the plan, then it comes back to us, puts us in line for funding. Joe called up there and asked a question, I'll let you comment on it.
Correct. In regards to the sibling issue, there's no, the board has the ability to submit the plan as part of the grant and make modifications as fit. There's no state statute related to a sibling preference, or that is underneath the board's jurisdiction of that.
I'm sorry, would you...
In talking to the state, the model that you want, if there's any change to it, there is no statute related to sibling preference in the Magnet School lottery system, so in other words, changing, any modifications of that can be done underneath your changes to the operation plan, as Dr. Sal is talking about.
And Kim did check with the attorneys, you know, there isn't anything that they saw that would prohibit the board to make that decision. They didn't know, that doesn't mean something could happen, but there wasn't anything that would prevent that from happening. So if the board at this meeting, you were talking about it, and you want to make a decision, no decision's made tonight, I asked, okay, if it's made at the next board meeting, would it be too late to file the report to the state? They said, no, that would be fine. They're really concerned about numbers, because of the state budget is basically what they're concerned about. So we have time to submit it before, you know, before July, thereabouts, we can submit, so we have time to think about it. So that's where we're at in terms of the research.
Go ahead, Glass.
Just a quick question, when you had the meeting with the advisory board, and all the surrounding towns were there, and the members from the state was at that meeting?
No, they were not.
So it was only the advisory board that was there? So then the communication to the state was that Danbury was in the process of changing the sibling process, and the state said there will be no problem with that. It was upon the local board to make that decision as to if they want to make that change.
Yes, correct.
Are you asking, or are you saying?
I'm sorry?
Joe, is that, that's correct.
Correct.
I was wondering if you were asking or stating?
No, I'm asking, and there would not be no libel suit later on from a parent against a board member if something does not work out right.
I think you never can say never. The case law from Shippin Coon, they said it was well within your prerogative to make that decision. Of course, communication, discussion, all those things are healthy things to have to do, just as we do with the district, but it's within your duty or rights to do that. Can someone sue, the answer is yes?
You can't now, I'm sorry, sweetheart, I'm sorry. You can't once we've started, I'm very, very sorry.
Does this come to vote next week or next meeting? This regulation change, that we formally adopted the regulations? What's the proceeding?
Well, I'd like to know when we started to do regulations. I mean, we're the Board of Education, we do policy, we don't do regulations.
I had that question also.
Well, I'm sorry, I just want to know from the administration, when did we start legislating regulations?
Well, you don't, but this is not, this is like, no, no, right there. This is within your purview, because it's much like you voted when we opened up the middle school. You voted on the lottery, in terms of how you want to operate. It's not a regulation per se, it is not extending board policy in your policy manual where I developed regulation. You have a program, and you follow all state laws, all statutes, that's what you're doing, but the plan to recruit students is your plan. It's not a regulation, it is the way we operate the program, it's a program operation, so it's not a regulation. If it was a board policy, right, generally speaking, board policy is developed by board, the administration does regs, sometimes we do them together. In this case, it was put in the policy committee because it seemed to be the one that made some sense, and the work policy came up, is my guess. No, it said it was put there, but it's not a reg, it's not an administrative reg, it's your, it's your procedures for putting students into AIS. Corollary to this, what has happened, and I've cautioned you this in the years, we have...
OCR that does a report annually on us. We have to be within our racial compliance. And when AIS was constructed, I was not here, it was the first year I came when it opened, not when they did the lottery. They did not permit the district to recruit by zip code. Because if you recruit by zip code in town, you would have a flavor from the entire town. That was not permitted to do. What you have is an open lottery. That open lottery goes out to everyone and then it's by chance, right, to come in. We are starting, beginning to become racially identifying. That means that when you get to a certain point, the racially identifiable number that they have scheduled for AIS, I think was 17 or 18 percent, we are now at 25 percent and we have a 30 percent variance, they're going to ask us what the remedy.
Correct.
They will not permit you to recruit by area code, right? So the way we're recruiting right now is we're getting to be pretty homogeneous. I mean, that's the fact of whether we were talking about this or not. They're going to ask us for a remedy. And it has to be a legal remedy. And one of the legal remedies was for us to go out into the areas that have not represented, represented in the school and see if we can increase the pool in the lottery. Well, you increase the pool, that doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get in, you hurt the percentages, that's all on target. Then it becomes less, as you know, the first grade is secondary. So the board needs to be cognizant.
So what is the solution then, sir?
I don't have one, I'm just telling you what the facts are right now, that whether we have sibling policy or not, we may be out of compliance at some point. They're going to ask us for a remedy in terms of how to handle it. That's all I'm saying. And right now, the way we have been recruiting our students has been we send out a thing, the applicant goes out and kids apply, they get in or they don't get in. If you have a sibling, you get in. All I'm saying is, the funnel is getting less and the homogeneity of the school is getting greater. And the purpose of the CJEF case was to create an environment where there's different cultures and ethnicity and race at a school that's not represented in Fairfield, Fairfield.
And grading.
That's the whole purpose. So they can come back to you as a state and say, you know, guys, you're not in compliance. Not only the OCR has a problem, but the state has a problem. They're going to want us to do something. I keep saying, what are you going to do? If you want me to recruit the way I want to recruit. So I'm just giving you the gist of the issues that you're facing as a district.
Just, oh.
The way this is going to work, I, it says discussion, I think you all need to talk about it.
We do need to discuss it, right?
Conversation. We're not going to vote on anything tonight, because the board generally waits at least two weeks. I'm just saying, we got a variance, we thought we had to send this application already, right? Now we have, they wanted some time, this summer, yeah, we have time to have a conversation and vote on it at least the next board meeting. So you're not forced into a vote tonight.
Okay, so I would like to, okay, excuse me, I'd like to, for the board to ask questions. Richard has his hand up, then it's Gladys, then it, no, then it's Bob. All right, we're going to wait until they come back.
I just, I have, I don't have a question, but I will have a question. I think it's, well, don't you dare laugh. I just think it's very, that we really need to be courteous and not offend anyone when we have someone speaking in the public, to let them know that we do not dialogue back and forth with people once our public participation is over with.
We need to change, we need to, and, because I do want to insult you, but public participation is every time that we accept comments from the audience. I'm terribly sorry. I'm sorry. Come to the next meeting in two weeks and, and sign up and then we call on you. I'm, I'm very, very sorry. But just call our administrative offices anytime you want, all righty, and ask all the questions you want and they'll answer them for you, okay? And Sal will clean your house too if you, if you call.
I'm sorry.
Nothing. Nothing, I'm just being a wise guy. All righty, you ready? Who's going, Richard?
Janelle.
Okay, Mr. Janelle, this is not it.
So two issues are at hand. The first, as I understand it, is what we had discussed and that is, is a change in recruitment methods relative to what's here as the sibling policy, number one. And the second that you bring up is the unknown factor of being out of compliance, whether we do change the sibling method or not, correct? And then my third question, let me ask one more thing, then to go back to my earlier situation, is if we, whatever we decide to do as a board, do we have to vote on this relative to a, a change in the methodology of how we do this since it's not a policy? So I'm using that word. Is this a vote that comes to us to give you the authority to rewrite it in your grant or your proposal to the state?
Okay, let me, let me keep the, the last question. The answer is yes, you need to do it, seeing as you made it your, your, your effort to do it, right? So you decided to review this as a board and to review the, the whole lottery system as we did when we opened the West Side. So the answer to that is yes. Bill is here because he does the OCR report. The, we just got the report last week right before the meeting, and what was the compliance status exactly?
Hear more?
Would you use the mic?
The, the racial balancing or racial imbalance report, as it's known as, talks about you can't have more than 25 percent or less than 25 percent of the overall racial makeup of a school, of, of the district. So AIS right now is about 21 percent, and that's pending racial imbalance, which is a concern of ours, obviously. We have two other schools that are around 15, 16 percent. And when you get above 15 percent, you have to start thinking about a plan. So our plan for those two schools is to create what we call a sister school relationship. So if it looks like we're getting out of racial balance, then we, we couple the two schools together and they, there's kind of a flowing, ebb and flow back and forth between the schools. The board members who have been here for a while, all board members, I'm sure, have remembered seeing the map that we used to have where we would reach down into different parts of the city.
I went through the zip code thing.
Okay, thank you, yep. So that's, the whole thing was done because of this racial balancing. So right now, we have three schools, one pending and two on the watch list. And the, the closest is, is AIS, I think it's about 21.5 percent. And when we hit 25 percent, then we, we have to have a remedial plan in place.
How do you, I'm sorry. No, Gladys, are you next? No.
I just wanted to ask, is that the reason why this sibling thing came up?
No, as I stated before, no. This came up, I don't know, a month ago when you had some, had questions about the lottery. All I'm interjecting here is to make you aware that as of last week, we received this OCR report. And it's looking at us for some kind of impending remedy to what we need to do. So whatever you do here, whether you stay with the policy or don't, we're going to have to come up with a system of recruiting or, or getting more ethnicity representation at that school.
So as the racial makeup now is at 21 percent, if, if siblings enter into the school, that would only rise, correct?
You know what?
I mean, if, if it does, I'm, I'm trying to get the information.
Well, if you're, if you're, just, you know, strategically thinking about this, if your pool is of the same ethnicity, the opportunity to expand that when 50 percent of the school is of one, it's going to be that much more difficult because the ability to open up to other folks to come in is, is, is not there. So should you make the changes based on that? No, because I think there was something deeper here while you were trying to do it, excess and equity. I'm just saying to you, you have few problems to be aware of. It's a school that if we do get resources from, it's a school that's supposed to provide integration along with the family setting, right? And if we're out of compliance, we're going to have some real challenges. And if you don't visit this, now you're going to have to visit a way of recruiting kids differently. If this number keeps going up, okay, then we're going to have a, the board's going to have a challenge.
That was my next question. If it goes up to over the percentage, what do you do? Move kids out?
Well, no, well, what we, what we have to do is, what we've got to do is come up with a plan. One of the plans can be, one of the plans can be is we, we have, we go into the schools where there's higher concentration of minority and we spend a lot more time recruiting in that area. If that doesn't produce the results that you want, then they're going to ask you what else you're going to do. What else are you going to do? If you can't recruit by zip code, you may have to look at the lottery and say, maybe we need to open up the gate there. I don't know, but I don't want to make this the reason for you to make the decision. I don't think that's fair.
No.
But I wanted you to be aware that this is, there's a pending problem going on.
I know.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay, no, but, wait, everybody, Bob.
Okay, I want to go to what Dr. Sal just said. The whole thing was brought out because of making the selection more democratic and less, I'll be honest, I'm going to use the word when people might be offended, elitist. I, okay, I'm allowed to speak my mind. Okay, I saw you frowning and I thought you were going to have a heart attack, okay? All right, now.
Better have tried.
To me, to me, by opening it up without a sibling preference, so many more families will benefit because there'll be more specific children from more families that are going to the school. I can't buy the argument that it's a big problem within the district when kids are going to two different schools. I think we, many of us who have children have gone through that one way or the other. Okay. Secondly, if we are going to meet the demands of why the school was set up, the ethnic diversity, et cetera, I personally think by opening it up without a sibling preference, that you will get a better pool and you won't be worrying about the 21, 23, 25 percent. But to me, it's more democratic. And I feel very, I think we did our best to be fair to all the people who were, had the sibling preference because that was what they understood and that's what we said we were going to do by grandfathering. I think that was the fair, I honestly feel that was the fair thing to do. But now, if the board feels along some of the things I'm saying, that it's more democratic to open it up and it goes that way, I think that people, the parents coming in know what they're getting into. I mean, obviously, we make it clear to them, we make it clear on the forms, we inform. I do feel something that was brought out, we, we do have to, as a board and whoever else is responsible, we do have to do a better job of trying to recruit a more of a mixed group. I honestly, but I think this has been a problem on other things that we've had on the board, okay? How do you fix it? All you can do is try. You try different things, some things work, some don't, but the point is, we have to try.
Anne Rose.
I just, Dr. Glass, I think you said that you had.
I'm sorry.
Microphone, hold on.
I'm sorry. No good? I think you, I think I can see.
You have to. Yeah. You said that there was one school pending and two schools watch in our district?
I didn't give you the correct statistic, I thought it was around 21 and a half. Actually AIS, I just pulled up the stat sheet, is 22.17.
Wow. And then what were the other two schools?
The other two schools that are on the watch list are 19.07 and 16.28.
And what schools are they?
Moore Street is 19.07. And our thinking would be possibly to pair them with Park Avenue. And it's contiguous and it's, would it be helpful for families? South Street is on the watch list at 16.28. And our thinking there is to possibly partner them with Shelter. And so that's also on the same strip. We're trying to be very sensitive to families and the idea of not separating the distance too much. The, the next lowest school is Hayestown at 11.71, so they're far below. And it goes all the way down, Shelter Rock is the lowest with 4.87. So the only three schools that are on our radar are those three, those three schools.
Could you repeat those numbers just so I have them?
AIS is 22.17.
17, okay.
Moore Street is 19.07.
Okay.
South Street is 16.28.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We'll bring that report next meeting when we get it, we're going to bring it.
That is not, one second, that's not our consideration right now, as far as that, I mean, the consideration, that's the consideration of administration. I mean, no, I know, I just wanted to make sure that everybody, that's not why we're talking about, about doing away. I do want to ask a question, and I know it's, I, I know it's already been asked and answered at that meeting that you had last week or two weeks ago. How did we start, why did we start with the sibling preference? Go ahead.
The reason that we, that it was given to the policy committee in the beginning was for a.
Please.
Was for a complete discussion on the fairness of the lottery, period. That's where it all started. We have a, a groundwork of parents that believe that the lottery is not a fair lottery. It's not a lottery at all to them. And our job as Board of Education is for all the children. And that's why we decided to have a policy meeting, discuss it among us and come up with a good solution for all the children in Danbury. Now, a lot of angst was brought out in that meeting. And I want the parents that are sitting here tonight to know that it didn't go unnoticed. We understand your point of view. But we also have to put the hat on for the Board of Ed and be sensitive to all the children in Danbury. That's our job. So it was the consensus that night to go ahead and change the sibling policy pending, pending Dr. Pascarella's meeting, pending Joe's conversation with the state, and pending Kim's conversation with our board attorneys. Those people have all backed off and left us deciding what to do. So yes, are we going to have another discussion? You bet we will. We'll have another discussion, we'll have more people come and give us their opinions if that's what needs to be done. Mrs. Nikowski, you did a wonderful job that night, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out and giving us your reflections and, and in no way does it reflect that you are doing anything but a wonderful job in that school and we thank you very much. We still, you know, we know, we know that we're doing something that is sensitive to the community. So if you would just let us talk about it and maybe have another policy meeting or another workshop, we could still come to a better consensus. Thank you.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be really brief because I'm just sitting here thinking, how long has the magnet school been in operation?
I'm going to say eight years.
About eight, seven, eight years.
Nine years?
Nine?
Nine years.
Okay.
And I guess my, my feeling is, out of the nine years or whatever years it has been in operation, this sibling problem has never came up before. All of a sudden, it just hit the fan. And I believe that I was elected to serve all the children in the city of Danbury. And I just don't know if it's just a certain group of people that believe that the lottery is unfair, which I, I, I can't resonate that in my brain. But I know that we, we have to make a decision and I don't know what that decision is going to be. But I think we have to talk about it and always come up with the conclusion that you were elected to do the right thing for all the children. And if that means retaining our sibling part of that program that we have in there, then we do it. If not, we have to look at at least four or five years from now, what's going to come back and hit, most of us probably won't be here that time, that's going to hit the board, that's going to come back and say, okay, this is what that board left us with. And they open up all kind of wounds. So I'm just, I just want to make a statement to say that we should really think about it, ask the questions that we need to ask the question about. And don't get so funny-eyed when someone is not on the same page with you because it's 11 of us and none of us think the same. So let's do what's best for all the children.
Mr. Halli.
It's just for discussion, that the lottery's been completed for 15, 16. So hopefully, next, next meeting, if you could have the racial mix, see whether or not we're in compliance. And then if I could ask, if we are not in compliance and the state kind of slaps our hand, what do we have? A two-year grace period, a one-year grace period to put a plan together? Please let me know.
Well, the state doesn't have anything to do it directly, that's a federal thing. They give you, you know, they'll give you a year. They're not going to close you down next year. They're going to say, what are you going to do? What are your plans? Next year's plan could be. Next year's plan could be, you know, we're going to study it, we're going to increase our recruitment, and then, you know, see the numbers, and then look at other procedures in the lottery. The procedures in the lottery are pretty simple. There's sibling policy for sending districts and us, in terms of what you want to do, because that's the only means of recruiting. So you don't have to, that's why I said before, I don't want that to be the reason to make this decision, but it's facing us as a challenge. But they'll ask us to write up what we're going to do, and that's what we would tell them. And then they would monitor us next year and then send something back to us, hey, guys, that worked or that didn't work. And that's what they would do. But how long that has, I'm not sure. I have never been closed. I don't think I want to ask a question I don't want an answer to, but my guess is at least one or two years.
Go.
They'll probably want some remedy.
No, I just wanted to say one thing to the parents who, you know, came for AIS and the principal and stuff like that. Just, you know, I have children in the district also, and it's not an easy decision, you know, to make. We do read all the emails, we do take everybody's point of view into consideration, you know, and there's a lot of different variables that go into a decision. So I just don't want you to think, you know, obviously, we're not anti, you know, a school or something like that. We're just, it's a lot of work that goes into a certain decision. We want you to know that we do appreciate your feedback and we do take that into consideration. And, you know, we just want to say, you know, thank you for coming and spending your time like we spend our time to, you know, take these issues into consideration.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So I just need to follow up here. What I heard Mr. Hawley say is that collect the information this year to see what our numbers are. By the way, they do that on October 1. That's what, that's what they would use. That would be next October. So, I mean, we could see what it is now. Our intention simply would be to write up a remedy here, if I don't hear anything else changing, to look at aggressively recruiting different areas in town. It would be our strategy the first year. So I couldn't have any racial profile until they sent it to me, which is not going to be until after next October 1.
Okay, but that also has nothing to do with the sibling issue. So what I'm going to do is ask for a meeting, not next week because we're all against the wall with graduations everywhere, but before our next meeting on Wednesday, the last Wednesday of the month, I don't have my book in front of me, guys, so somebody help me out with the numbers. Can we tell me when that Monday or Tuesday is? We'll have a workshop.
19th and 20th?
22nd is Monday. 22nd is Monday.
What is better for everybody than, I know that. So we have to have this meeting before that day, the 22nd. Is that okay with everybody?
I'm okay with that. Just, I need to ask you just bluntly, what is the purpose of the meeting?
It's a workshop for, so that we can just talk it out.
Tell me what you're talking out. So I know.
The sibling issue, because that's all we can address.
Well, you heard the audience say, we think this is done behind closed doors, so it's going to have to be.
No, they can come to the workshop.
I know that. What I'm trying to avoid is this idea that we're not listening to parents and that we're doing this in a clandestine fashion, even though we have an open meeting. Then the word needs to be told to the principal to tell parents that we're going to talk about it that night. And if they have things they want to talk about, they ought to come. Because, you know, it's an open meeting and not just open to those few that hear. I think it's important for the board. And then you have another whole side of constituents in town that really feel as though, why aren't you talking to us? Why are you only talking to the privileged? And I, and that's what's said. So to be fair, we're going to have to send some out to the folks in town, all of our people, and say, we're going to review this, and it's going to be next Tuesday, and it's going to be in high school auditorium.
That's, that's fine, Dr. Sal. That is perfectly all right. There's no exclusivity going on here at all. All righty. Everybody needs to hear and everybody needs to talk, but if you're going to ask us to make this decision, ultimately, it's our decision, then we need to vet it. And we can vet it in front of everybody, we, I don't care. I personally don't care. And I'm sure there's, everybody here doesn't care. They want to hear.
I just want to make sure everybody.
There are people in this audience right now that I know can get the word out faster than you.
No, I understand. But that's not my point. To be fair to the parents at AIS and the other parents, that you need to do it that way.
Right.
Okay. So would the intent be to have this meeting on Tuesday and then for an action item to show up here on Wednesday night?
Yes. Well, you just said we have to make the decision.
Well, that's if you want to make a decision to change it. If there's a change, there isn't a change, I don't have to. I just want to know what we're doing, that's all. So I could be clear if people call me.
So we can just do nothing at all and it'll just keep rolling over, right? And then they'll just angst over this all through next year? Mr. Hawley.
I personally don't think we need to do anything until October. That we'll get, we'll get, we'll get the change in ratio come October 1. Okay? The next lottery does not go out until January of 16.
No, you can't do that because the operating plan that we submit to the state before next September has to include how you're going to run the lottery.
So much for that.
Yeah, no, I mean, that was, I mean, the way it could happen.
Quiet down, Rich.
It was nice, Richie, but no luck.
Richard, if that is an intent to give it time, you could submit the report at the plan as is, and then collect the data next year, which means the lottery next year would run as usual. It'd give you next year to have your interchange, your conversation, collect the data, to make a decision that would then operationalize the following year. That's the other option. That's right, that's right. I mean, if you wanted to, right. Those are your options. If you want to make it for next year, you got to change the plan this year. If you want to give yourself some time, you need to change it next spring for the following year.
What is the question?
Dr. Sal, when was the last date that you could change the recruitment procedures?
You know, when we, when we asked the state, they said they want the plan before September.
Before September, so.
Yeah, before school starts is what he said.
For, to, which would affect the January lottery. So it has to be before September.
Yes, Richard.
I really don't see why we need another workshop or meeting. To Richard's point, if you're weighing something based on statistical compliance factor, then you're saying if we're out of compliance, we're not going to vote for it. I mean, that's the conclusion I get. Or we had meetings, you had, you had discussions with parents at some other meeting. We spend more time on this than we do with a $3.5 million cut affecting 11,000 kids than we do 400 kids. No matter what we do, we're going to offend somebody. And so I really don't need, I mean, I really don't think there's a need to prolong and have the same conversation and hear us say the same thing over and over again.
To Richard's point, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we adopt the amendment as per the policy committee, that the sibling preference goes away for calendar year 1617.
That's, we, I don't, no, can't do that.
I can't do that.
I can't add an action item.
No, we did the grandfather.
He needs, he needs an action. He needs, he needs direction.
If, if you want to do that, it's, it's on the agenda for discussion. And then it will come back.
On the next meeting.
The next meeting.
There we go.
For I vote.
That's what you want to do it? We'll do it that way. Can I see a consensus? Is that the way everybody wants?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
For it to be on the next.
Yes, 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 everybody? Okay. That's the consensus, it's done. Got that, Flo? Okay. Thank you. No. All right, good. I mean, all righty. Where are we now?
To be clear to the audience, it sounded to me as at the next board meeting, they're going to vote on the sibling preference procedures for the lottery, to make a decision, just that we're all clear, right? And if anybody has any questions, again, our door is open for conversation. If you want that information that we were talking about from OCR, you're welcome to that as well. Anything we can give you.
Could we get through the, no, no, you're not.
No, no, I got stuff to talk about. Oh, yeah, yeah, do that first.
Do we do the action items? Thank you very much. All righty. Are we ready?
You got it.
Okay, let's go.
That the Board of Education approved the 2015-2016 submission of the State ECS Alliance Grant in accordance with 15-121.
Seconded by Mrs. Cooper. Do I hear any discussion?
Discussion, please. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a, make a secondary motion, that we approve the amended submission of the ECS Alliance Grant. However, with a reduction of 135,00107 to Head Start, which would allocate 250,000 to Head Start for the calendar year 1516. And the amount of this reduction is to be used to reinstate interventionists and PSYOP coaches.
All right, I have, I have, I need to say something. We can't do that. We have to vote on the motion as read. So, all right. It's the motion that I have a, I have a second on the motion that said, that was the discussion. Is there anybody else with discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. May I see your, a show of hands? Okay, Flo, do you have it? It's Taberak, Crantillo, Malinero, Jannelli, and Cooper. Everyone against it? Is everybody else, is everyone else? Holly? David? Everybody else? Can we do that? You can do.
You gotta say your names.
You want me to say their names? Okay. David, Michael Ferguson, and Rose, Ralph, and Eileen. Okay. So the motion did not pass. Now is when they say it.
Would it be possible to now make an amended motion?
Yes.
To the ECS funding grant.
Yes, would you read it, please?
That I approve, or that the Board of Education approved the amended 1516 Alliance ECS Grant with a reduction of 135,107 to Head Start, so that Head Start would be funded to the tune of $250,000 for calendar year 1516. And that the amount of the reduction be used to reinstate interventionists and PSYOP coaches.
Seconded by Michael Ferguson. Any discussion? Okay. Bob, you go first.
Okay. It seems to me, I remember a meeting that we had a few weeks ago where a consensus was taken. And the consensus was taken that there would be a reduction of funds of $100,000 to Head Start. The consensus, we went around the table with all those that were present, there might have been somebody not there. And also, direction was given to our administration to inform the head of Head Start about this and that, that give the person a heads up that if there was a good possibility in the future, that maybe a year from now, that maybe there would be no funding at all. Now, maybe I have an illusion here, an illusion, but I think this is what I remember. Now, if we made this consensus, I take that to be something that we believed in, that should be the way it would be done. Now, if we overturn this consensus, I would say, please to the chair, do not ask us for consensuses anymore.
Taken, taken.
All righty.
Richard?
I don't understand why, with the addition of $1.1 billion, that we're again trying to penalize a program that's been rewarded and proven to be a successful program, contributing to a reduction of a gap, that it seems to me that based on the number of hands that were for and against, it's becoming political, and I would hate to think that, because the children or the families that this program services are perhaps the most neediest. And I don't know how many interventionists, which are part-time people, or 1099 people, as I understand, that maybe come and go and are part of your list of the average of 29 years of experience and, and, and work that they give to the district, is that we're diverting those funds. But I just don't understand it. I mean, if it's a matter of us talking out of both sides as to what is helping the district, we're not doing the right thing. We've got a superintendent who is saying he needed the program. He said he needed the program when we didn't have the additional funds. We got a blessing in disguise of having additional funds. And now we're penalizing a program. So I just, in addition to what Bob's saying, in terms of why are we wasting our time taking consensus behind closed doors, that something comes up? And I truly don't want to be on the board as a president. I'm speaking my mind here, I'm speaking feelings, I'm very concerned about this. I just came from a board meeting of an education connection last night where they gave a presentation on their Head Start program. The families that these people help, that this program helps is incredible, whether it's in Litchfield District, Danbury District, Hartford, or anything. It's, it's an incredible program to have. You heard last week's testimony or in our minutes from Ms. Lamanna, who's been with the, the district for a number of years before she was forced out, is part of the cuts to go to Head Start, is to what they accomplished in the two-year period, taking these 180 kids and putting them into the kindergarten class, you know, with our own teachers who were stressed and strained, it's an additional burden for these people. So again, it's, to me, it's a program that's an award-winning program, we know it helps. If we go back to say that it's a federally funded program, we were told it wasn't, or if it's K to 12 and it's preschool, you know, I think that's another issue. I tend to think that we in Danbury are different, we're Danbury people, we're Danbury residents, we just approved the $50 million school budget for a school building for which we can't There's credibility here, actual credibility, tangible credibility. And I really don't see the need to take away from it far enough. I mean, that's basically it.
Right now.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, I understand about Head Start that they are our kids that do come into our kindergarten. And if you don't know what an interventionist does, they work with small groups of kids who, to help close that achievement gap, with someone who needs help in math, English, whatever. Small, small, oh, okay, yeah. So what I'm saying is, when the kids from Head Start do come into the kindergarten, our kids, we want someone there that could help them. So, you know, that, that's, that's my thing. Every meeting I go to, we need money for this, we don't have money for that. We got cut huge, $3 million from our budget. So we're trying to make, make it up anywhere we can. So I do understand where people are coming from, and they are our kids, that's why I want support staff and coaches there when they get there. That's all.
Understandable. Phyllis?
I have a question to ask you. Do we have interventionists in kindergarten?
We have elementary.
No, they have elementary.
It's all, it's all elementary, it's not one specific grade.
My question is, do we send interventionists into kindergarten?
We have 16 elementary interventionists, and the principals use them at their own discretion, based on the needs of our population.
So what I'm trying to get across here is, they don't get the interventionist right away. They don't. So we're already, they're, if they're behind to begin with, they come in and they're getting further behind, and they were playing catch-up. So to me, it's a better use of the money on the front end, rather than trying to play catch-up at the other end. And now that we have little addition to our monies, right? It's money we didn't have before.
Right, it's 1.1 million, Joe? Is that what it came?
I think it's just a better use of the money on the front end than on the, like the wrong.
Okay. Oh, that's why she's not using her microphone.
Everybody turn their microphones, please.
All right. I believe it's a better use of our money to put it on the front end, rather than wait to the other end. I, I know as an elementary teacher that kids don't get identified right away. They'll, they'll go through kindergarten and first grade, and it's all the way up to second grade before somebody says, hey! Because you have to do all other kinds of things. So it's just my feeling that we really need to invest in our young kids, and it really would help us. And now that we have more money, I think it's a wiser move.
Okay. Next one. Kathy?
Would it help if we scratched Head Start's name and put, and called them interventionists? Would that help you? That wouldn't help you?
I don't understand the question.
You don't?
No.
Well, Head Start is, is an interventionist program. They intervene for us because they teach English. They teach not only English to the children, but they go into the homes and teach English there and make sure that the child. there and make sure that the child is ready to enter kindergarten. So if we change the name to interventionist instead of Head Start, maybe that would make you feel better about where the money should be spent. Because as Phyllis said, if we put the money up front, spend the money up front, we won't need it later on. That's my opinion.
Okay. Who's next? Richard, Holly?
To your response, I would say no, because Head Start is a specific line item. So as a specific line item, that, but we cannot, that's a specific line item within the budget. Secondly, this cut, you know, represents a reduction from the proposed budget of $385 to $250. It's not a total cut, it's a cut of $135,000. It still allows them, their operating budget, as per their numbers from last meeting, of approximately $3.2, $3.3 million budget. They're still servicing the children of the community, okay? Unfortunately, maybe perhaps not to the extent that they would like, not that they'll be able to maintain that 307 enrollment which they touted, but it's, the program's not going away. I feel that the money is better spent with interventionists, with dean of students, just based on the results that we're finding from the high school. That the absentee rate is down, the dropout rate is down, and that's all as a reflection of some initiatives which we've done and which we've taken and now which are have to go away due to budget cuts.
All right, Michael?
I'm not sure that there's been any statistics.
Use your microphone, please.
I don't have one. I don't think there's any statistics that indicated interventionists specifically reduced absenteeism, reduced whatever else it was. A general speaking or generalization was alluded to and applauded the different things that we had. But again, you keep using the word best bang for the dollar of the, and I think, and I agree with Phyllis, that at the high school level, if you're going to turn a kid around, that's great. But at the elementary level, a three-year-old, five-year-old, just think of what you're turning around. Statistically, it's been said, if you take those children and they're nurtured between the ages of three, five, six, that there is a definite difference in the growth pattern, in the educational pattern. I believe this to be true. Dr. Glass can comment on that. The, as Jim Maloney had said earlier when you weren't here, he said it very succinctly and eloquently, that the reduction would impair his program. When we were fighting for the money that we didn't have last week, it was, it was an issue and we said, "Okay, in the sacrifices, we would go to something," or even then you guys change your mind to go down to zero. But again, we got that gift. So why can't we continue to stay with something that has a proven fact as opposed to me is a lot of supposition? You know, to have an interventionist, to do tutoring, that's all wonderful, but I think something that's been around for a number of years, that's been very successful and more of our population is growing in that vein, I think we have to pay attention to it.
Okay. Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. You know, on the board, we do point experts like the superintendent and his staff. And really, to me, they made the decision that it was more important, you know, when they made their suggested cuts, they made their expertise judgment that was more important for the system to keep aiding Head Start rather than, which, and by the way, I wish we could do both, and I think we all do, honestly, because we, a good interventionist, I can always see the need for having those people too. But I really feel that looking at what was proposed by people we employ to be the experts and the fact that, again, we're putting it on the front end rather than the back end, I think you're always better off putting your investment on the front end before the problem gets greater.
Okay. Michael, do you have something to say, please?
I was somewhat hesitant to do this because I had prepared a few statement things to defend where exactly I'm coming from on this vote, but due to the nature that the discussion is taken, I think I have to defend where I'm coming from and where maybe some other members are as well. I was elected to the Board of Education to represent the 11,000 students in kindergarten, kindergarten through 12th grade in the Danbury Public Schools, and therefore they have to be the ones who are my priority. Our district has made serious academic advancements despite the tremendous obstacles that we face. This is due to support staff such as interventionists, such as high school deans of student support, which I believe, and the numbers show, are making a difference. But these are the areas that were proposed to be reduced or cut. Head Start is a federal program that receives federal money. In fact, our own district's early childhood program is funded through grants, meaning that our district has been giving more money to Head Start, which is an outside program, than to our own in-house program. I understand the importance of pre-K education, which is what makes this decision very difficult tonight. I wish our district was in better financial standing so that we could not only give Head Start more financial support, but all pre-K programs throughout the city. But unfortunately, we cannot do that. Tonight, my vote is not against Head Start, but rather it is a vote to continue the progress we have made for our kindergarten through 12th grade students. I cannot justify taking more money away from them because these resources have shown to be critical towards moving our district in a better direction, and they are the students that I am here to fight for.
Thank you. We're going to listen to it again.
Did you hear?
No, it's being good to go. All right. Is there anyone else that has something, anything to say? All right. I'm going to say something. It's going to be really hard for me to speak about this because I'm not Michael Ferguson. I don't have a well-oiled speech. I'm not, and I have a lot of passion, we all know that, but it's something that I've struggled with now for the last month because no one is a bigger proponent of Head Start than I have been over the past years. What it basically came down to, a conversation I was having with someone and they said, "Well, you can't, you can't hear me?" I'm sorry. What happened is, the person said to me, "Well, how can you afford to do that? If you can't afford the things that, the people that we appoint," as you said, Bob, "to jobs, if we can't afford what they put in place for us to make our kids..." So this is like our family. When you talk about, is it 11? I thought it was more like 13,000 kids. What, how many? It's 11? Okay. 11,000 kids. We have to take care of them, they're our first priority, the way our families are our first priority, because this is our family, okay? Yes, to prepare them the way they're being prepared at Head Start is a wonderful, wonderful thing, and it's something I would love. I also love donating to, I can't think of it, St. Jude's Hospital, who does remarkable work. But when I was flat-ass broke and didn't know, have a place to live, I couldn't give to them. And as I became not more affluent, because affluent would never be the word to describe me, but as I got more secure, I wanted to give, but I can't afford to give because I need, the people in my home need a roof over their head. This is my family. And yes, all the children, and I'm sorry, I'm not not looking at you, Jim, I'm sorry, you do wonderful work, I'm not taking away from that, and Head Start does wonderful work, we just can't afford it. It's donation, it's, to me, it's a donation. I'm very sorry, and that's how I look at it. Okay. I'm sorry that I went on and on. Let's move forward. If there's no other conversation, all in favor of the amended motion, raise your hand.
Aye.
I'm sorry, it's Holly, Matrina, Ferguson, Alberts, Plusley, Latin, and Petrefessa.
How much is going, Sylvia? How much is this 135 is going to be attributed to?
What is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, how is the split going to be done? How many interventionists do you buy for the money?
At the superintendent's and the deputy superintendent's discretion. That, you know, that $135,000 reduction to be placed, you know, general offers funds to be used at their best discretion, but with the intent of rehiring or reinstating interventions.
Or anybody else that they feel that we need to. All right. All against, anybody against? Raise your hands. Taberak, Crantillo, Malinaro, Jannelli, and Cooper. No one's abstaining. My word. Okay. Thank you very much, that was very difficult. All righty. Kathy, moving on to vote B.
That the Board of Education approved and set the district's budget in the amount of $123,786,1.81% for the fiscal year 2015-2016 in accordance with 15-122.
Seconded by Bob, Taberak.
Any discussion? Mr. Jannelli?
Has the insurance and everything been finalized? How are we looking as far as the renewals and then also resignations or retirements?
We have, right now, retirements are right where we projected we did up, as you see in the, and the cut, another $70,000. Those are, in a sense, fully accounted for. No major change in insurance. June's going to be an interesting month. We are seeing, actually, I can monitor claims coming through weekly, and we're seeing movement up. So I'm not, I'm not really in a position to say we have a further reduction in health, that would be really premature until we see the true carry-through for June and kind of full HSA year on teachers. So right now, Steve and I are fairly comfortable with the $400,000 cut you folks see.
When did we get the bump last year in claims? Was it June or July?
July.
Prior to the transfer.
July.
And it was July.
And your claim year now runs September to September. So we're kind of very interested to see what July, what July and August claims will look like, because that'll be, in a sense, be a full year all HSA claim.
Exactly.
We are, as I said, I did just receive, we can receive monthly, a weekly claim, which isn't accurate, but it, we did see a pretty significant uptick actually in last week's claims by about 200 grand, so.
And is Cigna monitoring it as well on a, pretty much a weekly basis?
They are, but, but understand, because we're self-insured, it's, the onus is always, in a sense, on us. Cigna makes a projection on claim.
Right.
In other words, we have to, in a sense, monitor the, you know, the nuances that happen. Like I said to the board going into the last cycle, I did kind of predict the July uptick and it did happen. Cigna did recommend possibly a further reduction in last year's budget. Steve and I didn't go with that and ironically, it did come in on a very hot July, so that probably was best served by the board. So I mean, like I said, until we see that full year claim September to September, we are probably maybe a little conservative in the estimate, but I think it's going to prove us well.
Thank you. Mr. Jannelli, I'm sorry that Mr. Holly spoke on you. Go ahead. You're done?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstaining? Thank you, it passes. Kathy D.
That the Board of Education approved the Rogers Park Middle School Puerto Rico trip January 15th through the 20th, 2016 in accordance with 15-123.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Matrina. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Objections? Seeing none, it passes. Kathy D.
That the Board of Education approved the 2015-2016 school calendar in accordance with 15-124.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ralph. Any discussion? We discussed it to death. Oh, no, we didn't, obviously. Go.
Yeah, we did discuss.
I don't know, maybe Dr. Glass, because he usually does the calendar or Dr. Sal, but what input was taken from teachers on the one-hour early release day? Because I know, I meant to ask this last meeting, I didn't really think of it. But I know, I know the whole survey and stuff, robo-call with the survey for parents was taken, but what was taken for teachers? Were teachers given a survey? Were they a robo-call? Were their input taken?
We do this in council. We give the calendar to the teacher, we give the calendar to the teacher union group and they, I'm sorry, to the council. The teachers representing, all of the teachers in the district.
Right. What happens, Michael, is we give it to the leadership of the, of both unions actually, and then there is what's known as a rep council, which has, and Phyllis knows this very well, which has a representative from every school in the district, and they share that out with their membership. And we use that as input gathering as opposed to doing another survey, because we tend to be kind of survey-heavy as it is.
Okay. I think personally, teachers probably would have liked a survey too, but, okay.
Well, you know, at the risk of pursuing this further, it was under advisement, we really didn't talk about the hour, Michael, because it was an arbitration issue. So it was, you know, it was kind of the off in the room. Nobody knew it was going to happen. That's all.
I'm sorry, Dr. Sal.
Well, it was under arbitration for such a long time, so.
The release day, the one hour?
No, no, the one hour.
It was under arbitration?
Yeah. Yes. Yes. You may have recalled that.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, it's, you asked about the hour, right? Right. About the hour. So that may be the reason why you were...
The union president was also part of the process.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to respond to what, we don't ask, well, if I said to all the teachers, "Do you want the extra hour?" It's not a point. The point was, when they voted in the contract, we had the five hours. The extra hour is advantageous because you're sending home students on your board time where you're paying money for them to stay. So that extra hour, we're gaining, we're gaining time, but we're already paying for it. We just buttress it with the hours you negotiated as a board for the five hours. That's all we did, anyway, so.
Okay. Dr. Glass?
Just one quick, just one quick thing. Ann Rose asked last time about the last day of school, half-day with a slash. We made that modification inadvertently. This is the previous version of the calendar, but that has been addressed as well.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? No. Seeing none, it passes. Kathy?
That the Board of Education approved the 2016-2017 school calendar in accordance with 15-125.
Seconded by Galatas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it? Passes. Go, Kathy.
That the Board of Education approved the 2015-2016 tuition rates in accordance with 15-126.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
None.
Any abstentions or, no, passes. Superintendent's report.
This is working again. Thank you. You may recall after the incident we had at the high school, we had been working on our plans and we did a threat assessment, expert come in with all the principals K-12, and it was, it was a, Bill, I'm trying, it was a full-day session?
I'm sorry.
The threat assessment. Half-day session that we had with the gentleman that was trained with hostage negotiations, FBI-trained, CIA-certified. He did a great job with us and reviewing our plans and putting us through a protocol. He liked the work that we were doing. We had scenarios that he went through. I think we're just, we're smart about what we're doing and how we're approaching it. So I want to report to the board, we did spend time doing that, and it was a worthwhile activity. Kim Marshall, I'm not going to belabor that. We talked about it in reference to, we're very lucky to have him come, that's all I have to say. Relevant education legislation, let me start with the 11th grade testing, S-Back at the 11th grade. I've spoken against it at the state level. A number of organizations have. We think 11th grade is over tested. However, the board, the state had to implement it because we're part of Title I and it was part of the plan. However, the state legislature reviewed it and reviewed with a recommendation to not utilize the S-Back testing itself at the 11th grade level, but to adopt a nationally-recognized norm-reference test, i.e., it will be the SAT. They need to see if the accommodations for limited English-speaking students and special ed can be done. They'll make a decision sometime in, I think, August as to which one we'll take. It's either going to be the ACT or SAT, but my bet is on the SAT. It'll be a one-day test and it'll be paid for by the state. So the kids will all... So the kids will all take it. You know, now, you know, there was some conversation about the cities not having those special courses that kids are taking, the grades might be, the scores may be a little bent, but in my view, it's not going to hurt our kids. We've had such a high percentage of our kids take it. All our kids take the PSAT, and I think the motivation's going to be there for the juniors to take it, right? Now, here's the thing I didn't talk about that you need to hear. As a district, we were out of compliance. At the secondary level, we had less than our percentage that had to take the test. We were, we were about 95. District-wide, at our elementary school, 99.9% of the kids took the S-BAC. They did opt not to take it. Middle schools were about 92% taking it. At the high school, I think we were 5% taking it.
Wait, did you say 5%?
5% taking it that opted out, that, that, right. Now.
95% opted out, is that right?
Well, I don't use the word opted out.
5% took it.
Yeah. Is there some reasons for that? And I, okay, it's 5%. But what that has done, it has put you under, is you're not in compliance with Title I funds, and whether or not there'll be some pushback or not in terms of funding, I don't know. I've asked the commissioner. There's a few districts that have been in that category. My sense is, they would have said to us, much like we were talking about before with the compliance, hey, you've got to do something about, give you time. I think it's remedied with the, with the SAT. I don't have to worry. So I think, you know, I'm not worried about that, but I'll keep you posted. I was worried about it before. The other, they're implementing the graduation requirements. We're moving from our 21 to 25. 21, we have 21 credits. We redefined our credits. They keep moving, this, this, the law was supposed to be in effect as, I think, of the next graduating class. We managed to get it out to 20, 21, another year. We keep arguing that just redefining the credits doesn't make a lot of sense. It's going to cost everybody a lot of money. In your case, in Danbury, 200 kids, 200 of the students leave without 25 credits. Out of 600 students, 400 do. So, you know, it's not like your kids are not experiencing our program. But if it moves everybody up to 25, it's going to cost you about six or seven FTEs just for Danbury and the other districts as well. So the, the, because of the money issue, the state legislature put it out another year. They have a task force. They'll come away with another camel after they're looking at a horse, I'm sure, designing a horse, but we'll have a recommendation next year. Right now, the sixth-grade class at, at all the middle schools will be the first class that'll have the new graduation requirements, if it happens. So we have to plan accordingly. They also mandated a study on the magnet schools. It's mainly the chef magnet schools because of the proliferation of the charter schools, and they're looking at whether or not it's, they're trying to increase parent choice through charter, and there's some arguments out there that limited funds are going to groups that don't have the same accountability. So they're looking at that, so there's, there's a year of study there. I don't know what's going to happen. The other thing is, they're mandating an innovation program, that's what Bill talked about before. We're going to see if we can participate in that and do some, do some of the work that we want to do in teacher eval, but we have to stay tuned with that. Other than that, I'll give you the complete lowdown. Nothing was done with ECS that affects us. Nothing was done with the AMVR that affects us, the minimum budget requirement. And that's about it. Thank you.
Go ahead. Dr. Sal. The current sixth, uh, microphone.
Telephone.
The current sixth-grade class.
The incoming sixth.
Oh, the incoming sixth.
Right, Bill? It would be, I'm trying to think, this was going to impact the seventh-grade class, the old, the 2021 would be the incoming sixth or the current sixth?
The current sixth.
I'll have, the current? I'll have to do my numbers.
Current sixth, because, yeah.
This current sixth grade.
It's current sixth?
Yes.
Okay. And is it this current sixth grade, is, is this the current, the grade level that is at like 900 and that's why we're, and that's?
They're the ones that are growing. Yeah, they're all growing. That's not 900, I think, I don't have it in front of me, it could be 750, 800. It's one of the bigger classes.
Okay, but I thought it was either the current fifth grade or current sixth grade that was at like 900.
I'd have to look at enrollment.
I would too. You know, the other thing is, please keep in mind, we always say this, when you project five, six years out, your demographic profiles are almost useless.
I know, I'm talking concurrently.
I'd have to look.
I thought that's, okay.
But when, when Mr. Paccaccio looked at adding the, remember what you did a few years ago? To your credit, we added science sections.
We did.
And that really helped us, you know, because we offered more lab courses than when you changed the graduation requirements. Now, if we didn't do that and we had, you know, start staffing for more labs and more of that at one time, then it would be much greater. So Gary and his staff took the seventh-grade girl, numbers, and worked it through in terms of the 200 kids, what it would mean for electives. The science helped us, but he thought you're going to need between, I'm looking over Joe, I think he said between eight to 10 teachers?
Correct.
Thereabouts? That's because you already added the science two years ago. So that's what you're looking at.
I can also give you, I mean, I'm looking at the numbers right now, that current grade one is 929, grade two is 918, grade three is 863, grade four is 860, and the current grade five is 819.
What's six?
Sixth grade, have to crunch them all together. We're talking one, two. It's about, about 2,300, wait a minute, no, I'm sorry. 2438.
That's all three.
That's all, that's all, all, yeah. I have to, the current sixth grade? Three. About 650 right now.
650 current sixth grade, 800 in the current fifth grade.
819.
819, which is.
I'm sorry, I'm missing one thing. Give me just one sec. Okay. Three, six, fifty, 750. Eight fifty, eight fifty.
In the current?
Current sixth, current sixth grade, eight fifty.
So you're looking at graduation requirements increasing and that number, 850 students currently, which is more than what we have right now in any, in any, well, seven, eight, nine, 10.
When I pushed the legislature people that were making the decision, the Education Committee, they simply said that across the nation, Connecticut has one of the lowest number of graduation requirements. Therefore, to increase rigor, in their mind, we need to increase graduation requirement. And the two do not go hand in hand.
I'm just saying, current sixth grade will be in the high school in two years, in three years from now. We need to think about.
Current, looking, currently looking though at DHS, the official number's 833, and then when you add 20 more from ACE in there, so it's still roughly 850, yeah.
It's the more classes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm done. I am really done.
I don't have anything to say to individuals, I think I've said enough. But what I do want to ask everybody here is to pay attention to the calendar for graduations. Tomorrow night is Adult Ed. Try to attend at seven, at seven o'clock on, Bob, you're coming, definitely? I'm coming. Kathy, Ralph, are you coming?
Joe will be our representation there.
All right, so we have them, and Joe will be our representation? Okay. That's good. And, what? I'm sorry, what did you say? No, stop it. Okay. Then we have, we, we have an easy day, we have an easy weekend, then we start with the ACE's graduation on Monday, and that's at 9:30 in the morning.
It's at the center.
All righty? It's at their, where?
At the school.
At their school, like it always is. Right. We all know that. We do all know that, right?
Yeah.
All right. Gladys, you'll be there probably? Yes? Oh, you don't know? Monday? Okay. Tuesday, it's graduation day, 12:30 is West Side, and then Broadview at 2:30, and then Rogers Park at 5:00. They're all at Danbury High School, so just bring lunch, okay? And, and we're spending the day. And then, and then, of course, Danbury High is on Wednesday night, Wednesday afternoon. Make sure for those people that have not been to Danbury High, that when they say to be there by 4 o'clock, that you're there by 4 o'clock because then they give the parking away. Bob?
Okay, just, I called Jackie Donardo because they have like, I don't know what you would call her, I'll call her the sort of promotion ceremony.
Yes, at Reach.
Endeavor, and Reece Powell will be the 17th, which is our graduation day at, I think she said 9 o'clock, okay?
In the morning?
In the morning, yeah.
9 a.m.?
It's a small group usually.
I know. Two days worth missing tomorrow, next week. Okay.
They appreciate it because, you know.
I know they, so that's good. 9 a.m. And we need to acknowledge Jackie Donardo for her wonderful feat. Would someone like to talk about it for a second? She was nominated.
Oh, yeah, Connecticut Hall of Fame.
What is it? She's being inducted into the Coaches Hall of Fame. The, what is it? What is it?
The FCA.
FCA.
CIC. United Association of Schools. Yes.
There you go. Thank you very much. That's all I had to say. We have an executive session.
Can I just, shout out to anybody who was participating in the Coda Festival? What an amazing day that was.
Yes, really, true.
It was just to see all the performing arts and all of the schools represented, and it was just, it was a wonderful day. It was, I was very proud of Danbury and how they presented that day.
Well, it's, the arts are integral to education, I'd say.
We have some very good people.
Very, very important.
Some of the things they were doing in the middle schools, I mean, what they, pointillism. I had art appreciation courses in college and all, and these were students, right, you